Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And before we get started, if you'd like to speak tonight, there are yellow pieces of paper on that back counter. Please fill one out and hand it to Ned in the yellow shirt as you come forward. If you do come forward to speak, please state your name and your address prior to speaking. I would ask everybody turn their cell phones either off or to silent, and if you do need to take a call, please exit the room to talk. The Planning Commission attempts to conduct its public hearings in a relatively informal manner within the constraints that we must deal with the issues before us in an orderly and businesslike fashion. We give the applicant an opportunity to speak first, and then others who are either for or against the proposal are each permitted to speak once. We do request that everyone restrict their comments to the issues before us, avoid unnecessary repetition, and be prudent in the use of time. We want to make sure that we have adequate time to deal as carefully with the last items on the agenda as with the first items on the agenda. And with that, the first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for recommendation for rezoning from TR 1A to R 1P LaSalle Street, McKinley Road, High Clear Estates.
This is the property. It is located on the north side of LaSalle at McKinley Road, and most of the surrounding property has R1 zoning. And there's an area photo, again, showing LaSalle. And the property and most of the surrounding property is either developed with single-family homes, is vacant, or is a middle school site. This is the middle school site here way down a hill. This is a composite, then, of the preliminary plat for the project. It extends McKinley Road into the site and comes around and stubs it out to this south property line. It creates 70 lots for single-family development. It has six outlots shown on it. Also within your plat are three sections of the preliminary plat. Again, this is LaSalle, McKinley Road coming into the site. This is areas in excess of 20 percent slope, which are then not developable. And you see how the road curves around that, and the lots are created then away from the steep slopes. This is a midsection of the plat. Again, the road's still coming uphill, and then the road coming back out on the other side. Probably actually could piece those two together, get a better idea of all that all pieces together. And again, you can see the 20 percent slopes shown in the dark shade. The lots are laid out to allow development outside of the 20 percent slopes. This is the only area where the road actually crosses that 20 percent slope area. The project includes 50 acres with 70 lots for single-family development. In terms of the rezoning, comprehensive plan identifies areas being appropriate for low-density residential development. The surrounding areas, single-family homes or vacant lots within the middle school located to the west and down the hill. The general development plan proposes a 25-foot front yard setback instead of the normal 30-foot setback within the plat. The purpose of the reduced setback is to move future homes away from the rear lot lines where steep slopes exist and limit development. This is particularly common up on these ridge lines. This reduced setback has been approved for other plats on rid lot ridge lines for the same reason. And applying the reduced setback for the entire plat in advance of development provides then a consistent setback for the areas the homes are built over time. And we did place the provision that allows Plan Commission consideration of that reduced setback within your report. In terms of the preliminary plat, it shows 70 lots for single-family development. All the lots meet the design standards for an R1 district. The plat does show six outlots, which need to be labeled as either dedicated for stormwater needs or to be owned by an abutting. We did label those six outlots. It's our understanding five of them will be stormwater detention areas in Outlot Two, which is essentially the steep hill, will be owned by an abutting. Access is via the extension of McKinley Road into the site, which curves around and will become a different name of a street as it heads back south, and then some other small public streets. As this road heads south, it does set up the potential for someday being connected to 33rd. 33rd is extended up to the north property line, and you can see it's actually graded underneath the power lines to an area where this street is stubbed immediately to the north. It is a steep grade to make the connection with future development of this property. That link between that roadway could happen. A temporary cul-de-sac would be placed at the end of this roadway in the interim. The public streets that are shown on the preliminary plat will need a street name with a final plat and council approval. Again, those contour maps that we showed you indicate areas in excess of 20 percent slope. Those areas will need to be legally defined and labeled non-buildable on the final plat. Again, there is a small area where this development will cross a 20 percent slope line with a public street. All the lots actually have buildable pads on them and not have to extend within the 20 percent slope area, but they will need an amendment to the sewer service area plan from DNR for crossing that 20 percent slope area. Utility easement requests have been received from XL, AT&amp;T, and Spectrum Cable, and we'll provide those to applicant to be shown on the final plat. We did attach the City Engineers' Report. We've recommended approval of the rezoning and general development plan, which will allow a 25-foot front yard setback. We've recommended approval of the preliminary plat with conditions. Label the outlots as either dedicated for stormwater needs or to be owned by an abutting, providing street names with the final plat. Legally defining and labeling non-buildable areas in excess of 20 percent slope. Review of a sewer service plan, amendment by Wisconsin DNR for that small area where they cross the 20 percent slope, providing the utility easement requests on the final plat. In the City Engineers' Report, recommended conditions on the developer entering into a development agreement for street and utility constructions, providing detailed calculations for stormwater runoff, again, designating those outlots. There is an existing water main up on this ridge, which I did highlight. It's within an easement, and that needs to be also shown on the final plat for the project. The proposed street grades, there will be a section of street grades approximately from here over to here, where they may be exceeding 10 percent slope. With the approval of this preliminary plat, we are recommending the Plan Commission allow a 10 to 15 percent slope for that section of the street. And again, then, the amendment to the sewer service area plan for slopes in excess of 20 percent grade. With that, I'd answer any questions?
Are there any questions? Commissioner Brennhold.
Darrell, with only one entrance and exit for that, do you see concerns for congestion?
With a single-family development no. It is nice to have the ability to someday get a two-way through there for emergency vehicle response in case a road's blocked, bus, postal service and other deliveries. But snow removal is another one. But this steep slope and the existing development that is out there has really limited the ability to address a secondary access other than the one that applicant is proposing with this preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions for Darrell?
I have one, if no one else has a question. The area with the really steep slope by lots 44 and 43, is it a possibility to do a cut-through there?
A cut-through?
You know, like they do on the north crossing, where they cut through the rock. Were they too small?
No, they'll end up, there'll be grade changes where they'll cut into the slope as they get up. They'll probably backfill as they go down to try to get as gradual of a slope. Their engineer, when he comes up, I've heard they're maybe able to keep them all under 10 percent, but they are noting there's a possibility for this section of the roadway, they may exceed that 10 percent limit and thus need a Plan Commission review and approval for that situation. And we have some of those in the community. Boston Court, which is out here, has actually had, I believe, a 16 percent grade, so they do exist.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Klinkhammer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Tufti, with difficulties that we've had with drainage and other developments up on the north side, fairly close to this, is the language in the Engineers' Report comprehensive enough and thorough enough to assure that residential properties that are already existing downstream, so to speak, are not going to be adversely affected by this development?
We're comfortable that it is.
Are there any other questions? I don't see any. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening. I'm Cody Phillips-Sack, CNM Properties, here to talk about the development. I will be partnering with Adam Ashley of Ashley Construction on this, but he was unable to make it tonight. But this is going to be a very nice development, a much-needed development for the north side. I don't know if you guys have paid attention at all, but there's very much a shortage of lots on the north side, especially in the city of Eau Claire. We hope to have houses starting in the mid-200s, all the way up to half a million and above. So figuring average value of $300,000 will be around a $2.8 million tax base for the city. Lot sizes anywhere from 10,000 square feet up to 120,000 square feet, so wide selection of lots and a wide selection of different kinds of housing, all single-family. We will keep the lots as wooded as possible. I mean, it's a beautiful wooded site right now and plan to keep it that way. It's very important to myself and I know to Adam to have a nice wooded development. Lot of walkout lots, you know, there is a lot of grade change, which can actually be a very nice selling point in a development. You know, I mean, nobody wants to live in a flat cornfield anymore, so I think that'll be nice. I believe the intersection at McKinley and LaSalle will be much improved. We've worked with city staff extensively on this and actually changed from our original plan, where we wanted to offset the road, but they wanted it to be a four-way intersection. I know they have a lot of issues with people flying through that intersection right now, so it's going to slow that down a lot and I think help out a lot. And that's all at our expense to change the intersection, and is a good idea, I believe. The density will be very similar or even a little better than the surrounding areas. This map shows the parcel here and then the area of Princeton Valley that will be bordering. The area in Princeton Valley is 67.43 acres with 112 residential lots, so an average of .6 acres per lot. Our development will be 55 acres with 76 lots, actually 76 lots, so an average of .7 acres per lot, so almost 17 percent lower the density. But I believe the most important thing is, like I said, this is something that is needed for the city of Eau Claire. I've noticed over the last few years how many more people are moving to the area and want to build nice houses. And, you know, I've been saying that all along, but I didn't ever research it. I went back this, just last week, and looked at all the meetings I've had since January 1st, and I've had 44 people into our office about building this in 30 weeks. And of those 44 people, 34 of them were from the Chippewa Valley, just move-up housing or, you know, for whatever reason, looking at building. But 10 of them were from out of the area, I mean, out of state, out of the, a lot of Minneapolis, a lot of people. There's just a ton of people moving into the Chippewa Valley right now, and, you know, a lot of them are going to Altoona, Chippewa, outside of Eau Claire, you know, in the rural areas. I think this is a good way to get them into the city of Eau Claire and get them on the north side, too. So with that, do you guys have any questions for us?
Are there any questions for the applicant? I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
We won't, well, you want to come speak, too?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Sean Bohan. I'm an engineer with Advanced Engineering Concepts. I'll be the project engineer. Just here to like answer some questions, maybe talk a little bit about some of the grades, some of the road grades, drainage, someone had brought that up, and then just the intersection at McKinley and LaSalle. We did meet with city staff, as Cody had mentioned, met them out on site, David Solberg and Leah Ness, and just kind of looked at the traffic. The city had done some traffic counts, you know, looked at different possibilities and stuff as far as lining up that intersection. What we're proposing, we feel, is the best solution. They wanted us to make sure that we were coming in at a T. It's going to be a stop on McKinley, on both the north and south sides, through on LaSalle, essentially, so you'll be able to make that turn and turn onto McKinley without a stop sign that's there. As far as the road grades, we do end up having some areas that have some steeper slopes. They end up being on the north end, pretty gradual from basically the intersection with LaSalle all the way up to where you saw like the 20 percent slopes. You know, we're looking at trying to keep them down below, or 10 or below, but it's looking like right now we got them designed at about 12 percent. Part of it that's an issue is that when we get to the top, there's that existing water main that's there, and we got to make sure that we end up meeting that elevation, that we're not cutting over the top of it, because it's a main distribution line that's up there. I think it's a 16-inch water line that's boosted that feeds the reservoir and stuff on top of the hill. So it really kind of limits us to try to cut through that area, so we're essentially filling from the bottom all the way up to the top, so we're not cutting in that area. And when we're doing something like that, then we're not able to try to make those grades kind of more gradual and stuff, so. And then Darrell had alluded to the fact that we end up having a number of outlots, five stormwater facilities, that we will end up going ahead. Those will be dedicated to the city. And we are taking, you know, stormwater from the top. It'll come all the way down the new proposed road, and our outlet is actually going to end up being in LaSalle Street, so we're not looking at discharging stormwater to the east and to the residential lots. Now, there will be some, with some of the homes being walkouts along there, you're going to end up having some backyard drainage that ends up going that way, but it's going to end up being, right now, everything funnels through there. And there's, I think, roughly around 65 to 70 acres that actually flows to the east and across those properties in Princeton Valley. Right now, we're going to have just some back lots on about 12 or 13 lots that'll end up having just the backyard areas going to them. Everything else we pick up, taking the stormwater facilities, taking the stormwater pipe, and then discharging out onto LaSalle. So we think it's a much better solution. We also think it's going to end up, as John had alluded to, take care of some of the drainage issues, if there are some, on those properties. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the engineer? I don't see any right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We will open up to a public hearing now. If you'd like to come forward, please make sure you bring along your yellow slip of paper and give it to Ned in the yellow shirt. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Is there anyone who'd like to speak? You can fill it out when you finish and give it to Ned.
Okay. We're good. I am not a speaker. I am a researcher, so this is what I'm going to have to show you.
You can pull the mic down, yeah, so you can talk.
My name's Diane Melnick, and we live in Princeton Valley at the very top of the ridge. So this land, when we moved here last year, was told to us it was undevelopable. So that's the way we thought of it. When our house was built in the 90s, the grade level was at 30 percent for the city, and now it's been reduced to 20. And as far as sewers are concerned, it's reduced to 12, the sewers. I have been going through all of your ordinances and things and copying them off, and the one word, the three words that I keep hearing are environmentally sensitive areas that this city has. So I made a call to Madison, and they are checking into it, but everything on the map shows that this area has those same statistics through it, the elevation, the ridges. I have the pictures here. I made copies for you guys, so. And then someone else wrote a letter here. I wanted to do that. But in each one of these things, the council had comprehensive plan of sustainability and the urban sewer plan and the erosion control plan. They all mention the same things, runoff. That is a very steep grade. I look at it every day when I go for a walk down there. Even if they build in the flat parts of this, you're going to have runoff coming off into that. And what's up there after a rainfall is very fine sandy silt on top of the soil. So that's going to be going off into your sewer systems, which, there are so many things in here, I can't, the stormwater. So I need to give this to you. If you could delay, refrain from making your decision tonight and read some of these things that I have put on here, if you could consider that for us. I don't know what else.
Darrell, do you have anything you'd like to add? I mean, you know these things better than we do.
Yeah, environmentally sensitive areas are defined as floodplain, wetlands, in areas in excess of 20 percent slope. And the developer has identified all areas in excess of 20 percent slope and will be labeling those non-developable with the final plat.
Correct.
With the exception of the roadway that extends through the minor areas shown on the preliminary plat. They will need to get an exception from the Department of Natural Resources for that, so they're aware of all those things.
And what is it, the NH, the HNI? They want to come out and check for habitat, for species and that type of thing, because if you notice, if you looked at the map, everything in this, and that was mentioned in here also, how much of our urban forests have been cut down. And if you look from that property on over to the, on to the way on the other side of the airport, everything is cut down except for Pinehurst and this little bit of forest there. That is our, you know, that's where we get our good air from. That's where we get our water. Our water keeps that runoff from going. I mean, the trees do, so all of those things count into matter. We're known as the bird city. There's piliated woodpeckers living in that, in that woods. There's deer. We're trying to keep management of the habitat up. There's no place else for them to go except the five acres we own, and that woods is pretty well thin and sparse, so it's just a lot to think about, and I hope you guys think about that part of it, too, the way it's, that's very dense up there now with all of Princeton Valley, all of LaSalle Street, all of 33rd and Jingle Court and everybody on the other side of Princeton Valley. That's a lot of people. We counted up over 500 homes, 500 homes. And then you multiply that times two with maybe two cars per household, that's what's going through there now. And then you add an additional, all coming out of one. There's so many things that we have concerns about, so we're hoping you'll take it very serious about it and do all the background checking on it for us. And if I can leave this with someone?
Yep, I would give it to Darrell, and he can pass it out.
And you were, this is all one tag. I forgot my picture right now, so it's going to have to be a name you guys can reference it to.
He can scan it for us.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Before you go down, let me see, are there any questions for the speaker?
Nothing.
I don't see anything. Thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this issue?
Good evening. My name is Steve Danielson. My wife and I lived at 2518 West Princeton Avenue. I lived there for about 15 years there, and she's lived there for about 25 years. We moved from that location about two years ago and sold the house to our son and his wife. The area that you're discussing tonight backs up directly to that lot at 2518 West Princeton. I've been familiar with that area since Stan Larson built some houses out there in the 1970s. I was aware of that because I represented him. He got sued numerous times for water flowing down the hill, that big hill that's in back to the west of Princeton Avenue. And between Princeton Avenue and the junior high school over there, there's a huge ridge, and everything flows down into the backyard of those homes along West Princeton Avenue. The basements in those homes have flooded numerous times, and my concern would be, what are they going to do with this development to prevent that from being exacerbated or even maintained in the way that it is? There's such a steep slope there and just natural runoff, putting aside questions of diversion of water and streets and all, and concrete and house roofs and all that kind of stuff. I'm fearful that there's going to be a lot of problem for those people who live on West Princeton Avenue. I can also speak to that area, the tranquility of that area and the beauty of the area. It was very, very quiet out there. We had deer in our backyard, turkeys, bluebirds, piliated woodpeckers. It's a beautiful tranquil area that people use just for hiking back in there, so I think those are just some of the comments I would make, and I would ask you to consider before you approve any kind of a plan, particularly with respect to the runoff. That has been since the 1970s a real problem out there. It's not just the house at 2518 West Princeton, but many of them next door, up and down the street, that have had water problems.
Thank you. Before you go, let me see if there's any questions. Are there any questions for the speaker? I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this issue?
Yeah, sure. Darrell, there will be some other questions. Okay, thanks.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Melnick, and I'm Dan's husband. I'm a physician, and I work at Mayo. And actually, we moved out here about a year ago, and one of the beautiful things that brought us here was the fact that it reminded me quite a bit of the area where I lived at previously, which was overlooking the Mississippi River on Highway 35. And we had a lot of beautiful birds, and it was fantastic, until it got to rain. A lot of the homes were built on bluffs, and the grades were around 10 percent. And there were a few rainfalls, and homes literally slid down the slopes. One home in particular wound up on the railroad tracks, and these were homes that were pretty The other thing, when I look at this plan, I mean, you know, I see pros and cons, but when I look at the layout of the other homes and I look at the layout of this particular development. development, I see really tiny lots, I mean, really infinitesimally small lots that are sort of on top of each other. What kinda homes are you gonna put there? What kind of access will there be for the fire department, for ambulance? If there's an emergency, will an ambulance or a fire truck be able to get in quick enough and respond to an emergency? Or are they gonna have to drive through a bunch of lefts and rights and so on and so As I see it right now, the area is congested as it is. In the morning, when I drive to work, the traffic is pretty heavy at times. There are little kids that you have to watch out for, standing on the corners, waiting for the buses to come down. The buses, of course, when they come down, they stop every few houses, they flip out their stop signs. So, the traffic behind has to obviously stop and yield to the kids that are jumping on board. So, you have this tremendous amount of activity going on in the morning, and people are madly rushing, going to work. I see a lot of people speeding, I see complaints about that all over the place. And when I think that another road is going to be built, I'm only thinking, my God, I'm gonna have to get to work a half an hour earlier, just to get to work on time, because of the potential congestion. You know, that's gonna be a problem. I know that you guys did studies, and I love studies, being a doctor and being at Mayo, that's all we do. We do study after study after study, and then we talk about it and we compare one to another. We'll do 20 different studies on one thing. We'll look at one thing from 30 different points of view. And then we all get together, have several meetings, times two or three, and then somebody comes up and says, hey, let's vote. I mean, that's how we do things. So, I don't know about this traffic study. I would really like to know details about it. I mean, from what I'm seeing, I'm seeing a lot of congestion already. And then during the winter, when the streets freeze over, I don't know what's gonna happen then, to tell you the truth. I mean, the streets are pretty narrow, especially when cars are parked on it. It's hard to get by and you gotta go pretty slow, and you have to, because you might hit somebody or you might potentially bump into a kid. This area, by the way, is a beautiful area. You have a lot of protected species that are trying to thrive there, and especially piliated woodpeckers. I mean, this is a protected species, you know, if anybody should kill one, even accidentally, they're gonna be in big trouble. And they're trying to build up this population, and this area is full of piliates. Down in LaCrosse, I'd see a piliated here and there. And we were just flooded with birds, but over here, there are quite a bit. Now, looking at the species alone, if it gets displaced, the natural behavior of piliated woodpeckers is that they are going to try to nest or look for food in other areas. If their habitat is displaced, they're gonna look for a cedar home, if there is one. And they might try and put a few holes in it. And I know so many people have had problems with woodpeckers trying to get into their homes. So, where are they gonna go? We know that we have a lot of deer, and I think the DNR has been looking into management of these herds, and I don't think that's a big problem. But there are other animals that are really strange and different. They all have a home. The trees themselves, you have a lot of oak trees. I mean, a lot of different species of very hardy wood that have been there for a long time. Cutting an oak tree that's been standing around a long time, you know, that, I would have to think two or three times before cutting a beautiful oak like that. There are tons of pine trees, just literally tons. I wish I could walk, I wish I could've walked further with you to take a look. But, you know, you have little saplings all over the place, and then you have these other pine trees that just, they tower into the sky. They, you know, it doesn't end. And I'm just amazed at the contrast of all this natural beauty. And then I think, how are you gonna put all these homes with all these slopes going up and down? I mean, I don't know the engineering's of it and the details of what type of artificial structures are gonna be put in, but I think this is a monumental project. And you're gonna have a lot of runoff all over the place. There are tons of mosquitoes there already. I mean, and these are nasty. These mosquitoes are probably nastier than the mosquitoes that I had to deal with on the Mississippi. So, I think there are so many things, so many factors, so many issues that are at play that I believe, honestly, in my heart of hearts. And I know that the city stands to gain financially. I'm all for that. I'm all for prosperity and for growth. I mean, it's wonderful, but at the same time, I'm for balance and I'm for equity. I add the positives, I add the negatives, and then I see, you know, where does it, at the end, where does it add up to? Where are the positives, where are the negatives? And are we rushing into something? And are we overlooking something? Are we absolutely sure, with complete certainty, that there will be no problems, no other issues, that this is something that's a perfect project? Or are there things to think about, or are there things that we should still see? For example, you know, instead of 70 homes, I mean, could there be half of that? I just saw a home of one of my colleagues, and she lives on the other side of Princeton, and it looked like there was a lot of space. I mean, her home was next to another home, but in the back of her yard, there was space. And it looked like it was an appropriate amount for a property. But if homes are gonna be sitting on top of homes, I don't know if that is going to be in the best interest of the community. I don't know. I have a lot of questions. My wife asked me to come in tonight, and I didn't memorize any speech. These are just thoughts that are coming out of my mind. And I'm just hoping that when a final decision is made, that the decision is in the best interest of this town, the ecosystem here, which is a very beautiful ecosystem. And for our children and for the prosperity of this area and of the state. And that's really what, that's all I had tonight.
Thank you. Are there any comments for the speaker? I don't see any. Thank you. Would the engineer like to come forward and maybe answer a few questions that have been kind of raised about the runoff and stuff?
As far as, you know, we've gone through the stormwater calculations, we've shared them with the city. As far as the locations of our stormwater facilities, the location of our outlet from our pond, going to storm sewer, going underground, and then going out to some facilities, we along, I believe along 53. But what we're looking at doing is greatly reducing the amount of peak runoff. As far as the volumes of runoff, you end up having impervious versus the pervious surfaces. So, volumes, you control by infiltrating water. There's some areas in here where we'll be able to go ahead and infiltrate stormwater. We're looking at it under, there's a power line that comes through there, there's stormwater facility underneath that that we'll look at some infiltration. But then, we end up dealing with the water quality and the peak attenuation, slowing that water down through what we call wet ponds. Ponds that actually store water, you'll see a dead storage, a volume of water that's permanently in there. Those are for cleaning the water. And then you'll end up having also pipes that are discharged. And so, our pipe that discharged down into LaSalle Street ends up being a 15-inch pipe, so...
And that's adequately sized for what you're adding?
Yes, it is. Actually, our peak rates are greatly reduced-
Okay.
-compared to what comes under the existing conditions.
Okay.
And as far as, you know, we did end up having, we spoke with the DNR. We have had, you know, studies done, passed. We had an ecologist and stuff out there, so, you know, I think we don't have our stormwater permit from the DNR yet. Our plans are not completed as of yet, you know, but we are going to be following the rules of the state and what the city has for the stormwater ordinance.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any questions? Yes, you can join into the party.
Let me embellish on what Sean just said-
Okay.
...and how we're gonna look at this.
Okay.
Most of what he said, well, all of what he said is true, but there's a few other little caveats. One of the reasons the stormwater part of our report is written the way it is, is because of the capacity of the storm sewer that's out here in LaSalle.
Okay.
So, this doesn't have the normal three-year predeveloped release rate, 100-year post-developed for storage.
Mm-hmm.
It's actually got the 100-year post-developed for storage, but the release rate is based on the capacity of either what this storm sewer is in LaSalle, or bringing a pipe back to the DOT ditch along 312 and bringing the water through there. Mr. Kamer, you referred to some drainage problems in this area before. I believe most of those were before our 2000, the eight-inch rainfall event, and that was before Highway 53. And at that time, Princeton Valley had developed, and it all came down to a ditch and a big hole in the ground to the south of what was then the end of Gooder Street, south of LaSalle. And then, it was left in that hole to just kinda well out into the properties below. Well, as that hole filled out, there were some walkout basements into that area that flooded as well. Since that time, there's been a trunk sewer that came up the 53 corridor that we worked jointly with the DOT on. And by the time it gets up to LaSalle, it's a 60-inch pipe-
Wow.
-from five foot, from 312 up to LaSalle Street and into Princeton Valley. So, there's been quite a bit of drainage improvements in that area since then. Now, as you look at this area, and I'm just saying a little bit more because sensitive areas is a big deal with this, the development, and I've got it zoomed out so you can see the whole thing-
Yeah.
...but the development is these properties and then this square through here. What these lines are telling you is that there's a ridge line-
Mm-hmm.
...that comes through here. So, there's a little bit that goes off the backside towards the middle school, and then there's a few residences up here. I don't remember the name of that street. I do know that I talked to this property owner this afternoon to talk about how this might impact him. He seemed satisfied with my answers. And part of that is, at here, they've taken that whole area and put that into two lots, so that you don't have a lot of little lots trying to drain down in there. But what this ridge is telling you is that a lot of this water is draining back towards Princeton Valley.
Mm-hmm.
As this road comes up through here-
Mm-hmm.
...it's gonna intercept.
It's gonna catch it.
And because that's a steep hillside, that's got more runoff than you might expect from a field or a flatter area. Now, there still will be these lots coming along here that have backyards that will still continue to send water to the east. And there will need to be some vigilance, and that happens during the building permit process of those houses, as to how that backyard gets landscaped and handled, so that we don't impact these significantly. There will be water. There is water now, there will continue to be water going that way. This road will intercept most of it and bring it out into the public drainage. And those are the kinda things that we're gonna look at when we review this, when they get their plans submitted for our approval.
Okay. So, let me ask a question. The road that runs then to the north goes around the ridge line, and there's the smaller lots along there. Will those lots primarily be leveled to the front and then drop off in the back like for a walkout basement?
Um, I would-
Okay, that's the anticipation? Okay. So, what do you do in the backyard when there's the runoff there? Is there a place where you can do like a rain garden or something to help absorb that moisture, or what mitigating-
You can do things like that. You can do like Highview Estates up on the northwest side of town.
Okay.
Almost due west of this-
Yeah.
...under the same power line. There were some berms in some retained areas-
Okay.
-along the back.
Okay.
There still is water running off of that into those parcels, too. There was a little bit of a problem during construction. At one point, there was some sediment, but that got fixed and cleaned up, and I've not heard those problems this summer. Those were last summer.
Okay.
But as far as walkouts, you know, this is coming uphill to the end, and so, this is actually lower than what you have on the adjacent property.
Okay.
You'll probably have maybe some walkouts along here, and maybe, hard to tell with this grade, and it's gonna have to be Cody or Sean to answer that, but this side is a little bit flatter, so I don't know that you would have that.
Okay.
You probably have walkouts off of this road-
Up on top.
...coming down.
Sure.
But those backyards go into the backyards of their plat, which go into the front yard, which come out to the street, which gets collected into the public drainage system.
Okay. Very good. Are there any questions? Commissioner Larson.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Jensen. I appreciate the way you explained the runoff and that sort of kinda looks to me like an amphitheater side of the hill where the development is actually gonna occur and the street catching that runoff and stuff. I understand the way you explained it.
And please don't misinterpret. There still will be some runoff that comes.
Right.
I'm not saying there won't be any.
Right, right. And I do understand the concerns of people who have already developed homes and live in homes to the downward side of that slope. So, but as a plan commissioner, I don't, with my background, I really don't feel qualified to make a decision about whether this is appropriate runoff or not. So, for that reason, I'm glad that the DNR is gonna be issuing, under the grading section here, it says that the Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission will coordinate and review and approvals with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Now, I can finally get to my question.
Okay.
Is there an opportunity for these folks to provide input into that process that involves the DNR?
And by that, you mean the neighborhood?
Yes.
Or as these folks?
Yes.
You know, I'm not exactly sure. I know that the way we write the development agreements for this, and just to clarify the section that you're referring to, and it refers to our sewer service area plan, which has a statement in there that it identifies slopes in excess of 20 percent that are sensitive areas. As the lady sorryly pointed out earlier, oddly, when Princeton Valley was first developed, they were given an exception to that. It's been 20 percent, but Princeton Valley got an amendment to allow development up to 30 percent. And that was for reference to 30 percent for Princeton Valley. This part is still in the 20 percent. I'm not sure what the reference to 12 percent is, that may be something out in Eau Claire County as to how they handle some of their developments. But it's a limitation in our sewer service area plan that does not allow disturbances within 20 percent slopes, natural 20 percent slopes, without an amendment to our sewer service area plan. So, we write the development agreement that the developer provides us the materials that we need, the soil surveys, the slope surveys, some of which they have done, the materials to do that, which we then- to do that, which we then submit to West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning for their review. I don't know if they have a hearing or not, or if they review it and then submit to the DNR for the DNR approval, which comes back to them as the authors of that plan.
So are they required to submit an erosion control plan that typically includes proposed slope stabilization measures?
Yes.
Okay.
And they won't get a type four amendment? We won't even submit it without having that sort of information. We want that, too.
Right. The DNR reviews that. Their erosion control and slope stabilization.
I believe they do.
Okay. And so I guess, and it sounds like we're not sure, but I'm wondering if the people that live down slope of this will have an opportunity to provide input into that process, into that review process.
I don't have a mechanism within my office at this time to do that. I don't know if the MPO, which West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission is part of, if they have that as part of their process.
Okay.
I don't know how to answer your question.
Commissioner Peterson.
Now, that DNR review for the sewer service plan, that is just for the slopes greater than 20% that are being disturbed.
Yes.
Which is basically the roadway.
That's what's being requested, I believe.
Okay. And the other slopes that are greater than 20% are not going to be disturbed because it's forbidden by city ordinance?
Without a type four sewer service boundary amendment.
And they've laid out their lots so that houses can be placed on the lots without disturbing the slopes greater than 20%?
Yeah, I believe that's the question that either Sean or the engineer or the developer should answer.
Okay.
Very good. Commissioner Brennhold.
Kind of just to cut to the chase. Can we assure the people to the east of this new development that they won't get any more runoff than they're currently receiving?
Oh, you're asking an engineer to say something?
I'm a cut-to-the-chase kind of guy.
Let me tell you that in September of 2000, our September 11th, we had eight inches of rain in a very, very short period of time. We designed a lot of facilities for those, but at some point, there's going to be a rain bigger than that, and I hope I'm retired when it happens. I can't stand up here and say, no, there will never be any impacts. I can stand up here and say that, at least to the 100-year rainfall event, which is our design standard, that we can look at this and mathematically establish that there's going to be no additional runoff coming that way. Now, that's mathematically with a design storm and a design distribution. That's not to say there won't be little bursts here and there, or over time, there'll be landscape revisions that we're not aware of that funnel water. There could be all kinds of things that happen. So never say never. But we will endeavor our best as staff to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Peterson, oh, you're not done yet.
I wish I hadn't gotten up now.
But with your explanation, you're saying that most of the lots west of proposed McKinley Road will have their runoff captured by McKinley Road and therefore come into the storm sewer system down McKinley Road?
I will say, all of the lots west of McKinley Road, except for the north-south part here, the ones that are west of this, they'll continue to go off towards the school. But everything west of this part of McKinley Road will come down the hill and be intercepted by the road.
So that area you just showed, without this development, all of the runoff from that ridge to the east goes into these people's backyards now?
Yes. If you look at, if you read the contours, these always point uphill. And so right now, there's a valley that starts at this ridge, comes right down, right through there. So there's already water coming that way, and that might be the drainage problems that were being referred to earlier. I didn't catch the gentleman's address or where particularly that was, but there is water. And here, you can see these contours, water runs perpendicular. This water is coming at these properties now.
So that even though the houses in, let's say, lots 48 through 63, which will drain to the east and have impervious surfaces with roofs and driveways, maybe patios, they may add some water flowing to the east, but all of the water west of there that now flows to the east will be captured by McKinley?
Yes.
So it could be a break-even or even less water coming down in those people's backyards?
I would argue in a very intense rainfall, when the soils are already saturated, like we've had some already, where the soils are wet, they're not taking any more moisture, they will probably see less water. They will still see water, probably less.
All right. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? I think we're set for right now. Would the developer like to come forward? Is there anything you'd like to add to this?
No, I don't really have anything, except that we will, I mean, Adam and myself will be, also be building a lot of the houses in here, which I think is a very important part of the runoff. We've dealt with that a lot, especially the last two years throughout the Chippewa Valley. And so we know what to do to keep the water from going in others. And we have dealt with a lot of neighboring developments that are discharging water onto where we're building, so it, we'll be very conscious of that. Yeah, I think the one thing I'll say is talking to the owners, and they own this land for 50 years, the Nelson family, and they started to hear some of the grumbles. And I will say this about the Princeton Valley neighborhood, we have a lot more people interested in this development and wanting to be in it from Princeton Valley moving into this area, because they want north side, but they want, you know, new housing and move up housing. We have a lot more than in this old room today, so it is, it's not a huge, it's not just a huge opposition. But the one thing the Nelson family said was, the neighbors all along this area have been using their land for 50 years, and their parents always knew that they would come, that they would sell this and it would be developed, and just always figured, you know, that they'll just allow them to use the land. And it was great that they did that and allowed people to, but they were using land that wasn't theirs and are kind of used to this land. And the people up here on the hill, cutting all the trees down in their backyard to get the views, you know, I don't think there's a lot of concern about the woodpeckers and stuff in that point. So we'll build a beautiful development and do it right, I can assure you that. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Seymour.
Thank you. Nice. Cody, what is the, it's probably hard to predict, but what's your timeframe on this development? Is it going to, you're not going to build 70 houses this weekend?
No, no, I don't think so. I don't think that's possible. If I had to guess, I mean, it's getting a lot of traction, for sure, and we haven't marketed it all or advertised it all. A lot of traction just because of the north side and people wanting to be there. I would guess at least two years, you know, just because you can't build any faster. And there'll be a lot of people that just will buy a lot, you know, knowing in a couple years they're going to build, that happens quite a bit.
Are there any other questions for the developer? I don't see any. Thank you. Technically, the public hearing is still open. Keep in mind the rule that you may speak once and only once. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment tonight? Please make sure you've got the yellow piece of paper that you hand to Ned.
Thank you. We wanted to discuss first the properties that are...
Do you need to state your name and address?
Robin Holmes, 25, 24, West Princeton Avenue.
Okay.
On Princeton Avenue, the lot sizes that are, the lots that are being built from 57 to 63, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven being built on one, two, three, four pieces of land, behind four pieces of land. And those are the shorter properties, they're the smaller lots, they're like half the size of our property. And them building those houses right behind our property, we are not going to have a better view. We're going to be looking into the back of houses is one of my concerns. And that's actually how it looks, not only in that area, all the smaller houses seem to back up to other properties that are currently there right now. The bigger houses seem to be the properties that are more along the lines of the ridges. And so I don't see how that's like, you know, the same as all the other properties that are in the area right now. And my other concern was the one exit with all these properties, because there's going to be 70 houses there. And we have a group discussion where we try to make sense of things, and it was brought up that that's a possibility of 140 vehicles coming in and out of that one exit. And that one exit is the only way that our kids can bike or walk to school, they're going to have to go across that road. So that's a major concern for us with children. And I just kind of wanted to bring that up while I had the chance.
Very good. Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you.
Thank you. And...
Show them the map. These are all east. These here, these are our lots, right? Your lots? These are the homes that are going to be built, they're all going to drain into that. So show them that.
May I show you guys something?
If you put it underneath the camera there, here, they'll help.
Okay, they were talking about the runoff west of McKinley going back here, and these are actually the houses that flooded in the past. And our house is in there, and our house still has drainage issues. We actually have two drains in the back of our yard, because we're kind of like a funnel for that area, where everything runs off and goes down and comes in this way. So we actually had to get drainage drained in our yard. And all these houses here are going to end up still draining off into the properties that already have drainage issues.
Yes, and they have said that they will be putting things in the backyards of those houses to try and divert that water, so that it doesn't just automatically flow over. There are various measures that they'll be looking at. So they are aware, and we are really aware, that there are some drainage issues, because you do have the hill behind there. But if you can put that map back out there, if you look at everything that is to my left of the roadway that's running on McKinley, okay, all of the stuff that comes off the top of that hill now is going to get captured by the road and put into the storm sewer, and it will end up eventually, I bet, in that pond that's at 53 and the 312 intersection that's right to the left there, when you're heading south. So I actually think it may improve the position for where you're at right now. Because you've got everything from the top of that hill coming down, and we're going to take three-quarters of that away. That's how it's been designed.
And was that the comment, where there was absolutely no guarantee, but it's hopeful?
Well, life doesn't come with guarantees. So you will have to see, but they're going to do everything they can, and the DNR has to approve it. So we've got some good checks and balances, I think.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You bet. Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Okay. This is still a public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I'm Chris Solberg, and 3205 North Star Drive in Eau Claire. We live, would be on the north side of the proposed development. And I do know, like some other people have mentioned about runoff, and in this case, you know, especially my neighbors on North Star Drive there, both on North Star Court and further up, during the spring and summer, they already run their some pumps like 24 hours a day to capture the water coming off that side of the hill. And it sounds like there is going to be not as much done about runoff to that north side, so it sounds like that may increase. And I'm not sure, but it just sounds that way to me. But the biggest issue that I would have would just be, as was stated before, about the wildlife again up there, that there's very few significant areas of, you know, significant wooded areas and green space like this within the city limits, or in this, you know, within the urban area of Eau Claire. And I know there's some, but you know, this is a really significant area up there, and as such, it is just loaded with wildlife. And I attest that we do also have woodpeckers in our backyard. And, you know, we see some, you know, deer, and we see rabbits, snakes. My kids are related to the snakes that they see there sometimes. But, you know, plus, this is probably not considered a reason to stop a development, you know, but if you just, as a side note, I mean, if you drive up and down Abbey Hill or in different areas, you know, that whole hillside up there is a beautiful area to look at, which would also be drastically changed with this development. I guess the last thing, I don't know if this has been looked at, but if there's 70 homes up there, significant addition, how that'll impact attendance at North Star Middle School, perhaps. I know this school, as I understand it, is already near capacity, and so just wanted to at least make sure that that's looked at.
Thank you.
All right.
Are there any questions for the speaker? I don't see any. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and I'd be looking for a motion.
I'm still moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it with staff recommendations.
Okay, is there any discussion? Commissioner Brennhold.
Yeah, this is a tough decision, without a doubt, and there's pros and cons both ways. I'm going to vote no on this right now. And the reason being is, I think there's a lot we don't know. I'm concerned about the drainage, I'm more concerned about the congestion with the entrance and the exit, so right now, I'm going to oppose.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Larson.
Thank you. I think there are a couple of issues that need to be considered in this development, but I am confident that the review of the Department of Natural Resources and the Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission will address those. One is the drainage. And Mr. Jensen, I think, gave a pretty good layman's description of the sort of engineering considerations that go into whether the runoff is going to be properly addressed. And I'm comfortable with that, but I am also very comforted that the DNR will be reviewing that information and giving their approval or not. And whether there's a public hearing or not, these entities, both of them, the Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission and the Department of Natural Resources, have avenues of contact. So whether there's a public hearing or not, this material that was presented to us here for their consideration can be submitted, I'm confident. And then the piliated woodpecker, I don't feel qualified to make a decision about whether this development is going to adversely, significantly adversely, impact the habitat of the woodpecker. But I think that is something that the DNR would know more about than myself. I don't know if they specifically address that in the planning that they talk about here, it doesn't look like they do. But I know that they are... But I know that they are the avenue for providing protections for those kind of species. I certainly am not. I will be supporting this tonight.
Commissioner Peterson.
I feel comfortable with the drainage, as was explained by Mr. Gensko and the developer and engineer. As far as traffic is concerned, 70 lots, let's say 140 vehicles during a peak hour, it's going to be in a stop condition coming to La Salle Street, which is right now a free flow left and right, to and from the south and to the east. So it will be a stop condition, and I think safe. McKinley Road from there down to Highway 312 and the 312 intersection should be able to handle all that traffic. And I'm going to be voting in favor of it.
Are there any other comments? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next item on our agenda, public hearing for recommendation, stormwater and partial grading ordinance amendment.
Let me do some housekeeping before I...
Oh.
Kind of maybe a timely topic after the last.
Yeah.
I had to have something, engineers need something to speak to, so. We get it right side to right? This is the table of contents of our city ordinances. Let me start by saying we're nearing the end of a rather long process to condense the city of Eau Claire ordinances regarding stormwater from multiple references throughout the ordinances to consolidate them in one chapter at the end, which is Title 19 Stormwater. Currently, that section is mostly having to do with our stormwater utility in the billings. And we get multiple phone calls from out-of-town developers of what are your stormwater requirements? We don't see them in Title 19, and then I have to go back and show them where they are. Then it also codifies some of the water quality requirements that we've been enforcing as requirements of our MS4 permit, which we received back in 2002, I believe it was. And it also references the rainfall amounts that were recently adopted by the DNR for Wisconsin that were reflected in NOAA's Atlas 14 study about two years ago, where they reanalyzed rainfall throughout the Midwest and came up with new design storms. The proposed revisions are brought forward to address current best practices in stormwater management and meet objectives of the public utility section of the comprehensive plan. This will be my seventh presentation on this. The first one was back in 2004 to the home builders. And there's been six others since then over time. In general, nothing changes in our current practice or our requirements in general. Now, there are some, there are four in particular. There will be a requirement to submit erosion control plans for land disturbing activities greater than 15,000 feet. The reason that 15,000 square feet was chosen, we didn't want to get into single-family and duplex development, which is regulated under the Uniform Dwelling Code. We didn't want to impact people that were out tilling gardens and re-landscaping their backyards and things like that. But, and then disturbances greater than an acre go through the DNR. And some examples of that would be on the south side of 312 over by Black Avenue, where there was a pretty big cut there. There was some activity down on South London Road, just north of Gulf, that all went through the DNR, and then we started getting phone calls. We would get to see these. Now, what we're asking for on those is just what their erosion control plans are going to be. And mostly with our sandy soils in most areas, that will be silt fence. If a development like this were to go and start clearing in advance of the rest of the developments, then there would be more erosion control plans than just silt fence. But it protects against things like that. Those are the examples. It will require certification by the licensed engineer responsible for the design of stormwater BNP's on-site plans to certify that they actually got built the way that they were designed and approved. And it requires a BNP maintenance plan for private stormwater BNP's. If the BNP is a grass whale, it's probably nothing more than mowing and not using phosphorus in the fertilizer. But we're starting to see some more sophisticated biofiltration devices that take a little additional maintenance that we want the property owners or the site plan owners to know how to maintain what they have. We've required that in the past for underground facilities, and we've required that for fuel stations, because mostly that will have a spill prevention plan, but now we'll be requiring it for all BNP's. Did I say four things? That erosion control practices certification, or not part of the ordinance, but will be part of the fall budget, is a permit review fee, consistent with the other permit application fees for other development. So, the other item of note is it will clarify the rainfall amounts. And that in general, when NOAA went through and did their analysis, they appended, I think the previous information was 50 years of data going up through the mid-50s, now they brought it up into the 80s. Generally, what happened is our lower design storms stayed about the same, the two-year, the one-year. The five and the 10 actually went down a little bit, so those design rainfalls are actually a little bit less. And then the larger rainfall events went up about 10%. The 100-year event went up six tenths of an inch, from six inches to 6.6 inches. So we'll have those new amounts, and then the new rainfall distribution that they established as part of that process. The reason it's taken a while to codify that is that the DNR then went and took NOAA's information, which had spots all over the state, and consolidated that by county. And then it also identifies that all development within the city of Eau Claire will be based on Eau Claire County rainfall, not the Chippewa County. So we don't have different rainfalls as we go across the corporate limits. The DNR has reviewed these ordinances, they've determined that the consolidation is compliant with our MS4 permit, that's our municipal stormwater permit. And the last thing, there's actually a typo in your plan, Commissioner, it says a public hearing is scheduled for the council on August 21st and action on the 22nd. It's actually at the next council meeting, August 7th and August 8th. So that will be presentation number eight on this over the years. So with that, I'll just stop. If there's questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yes. Commissioner Klugheber.
Mr. Gensko, if this amendment were passed a month ago, would it change anything in what we had just approved?
No.
For that development?
No.
Would there be any tighter requirements or additional scrutiny to any of the drainage issues that were brought up with that?
Nope.
Thank you. I'll go out on a limb here and recommend this ordinance amendment for approval.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Peterson.
No, I like it. Basically, as you said, John, it's just putting everything into one area, so you aren't looking at eight different areas.
Yeah, with...
With the four changes.
Yeah, the three changes and then the fee, which is in our fee schedule.
Okay, thank you. So I would second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, but we haven't finished our...
It's still public.
Yes, we do, we need public input.
And I believe the reason for the public hearing is because some of these are part of the zoning code, where some of the stuff is referenced and is taken, those references to Title 19.
Let's take things one at a time. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Since we are the applicant, I don't have to ask them to come forward. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? If not, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, shall we call the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item on our agenda, public hearing for final action, conditional use permit for home occupation hair salon at 2117 Bordeaux Court.
This is the property of Bordeaux, Bordeaux Court. This surrounding neighborhood is all zoned R1, and also in your packets and aerial, and you can see the single-family homes within the area. This is for a hair salon business. We did attach the application for home occupation, which was completed by applicant, explains the details of her business. It would be conducted out of a bedroom, which is 144 square foot in size. The home does have a three-car garage, so there is plenty of room in the driveway to park vehicles. Clients would come to the business by appointment only, with one client per hour scheduled. Hours of operation are nine to five, Tuesday through Friday, with two nights a week until 8:00 PM. These types of home occupations with scheduled clients on an hourly basis typically have minimal impacts on the street. The home occupation appears to meet our standards, and we have recommended approval.
Are there any questions for Darrell? I don't see any. Is the applicant here? You can come forward and make a presentation if you'd like.
Good evening, I'm Sally Blues, and I live at 2117 Bordeaux Court. And I've got to have my eyeballs here. First, I want to thank everyone today for the opportunity for you to listen to my proposed plan. Just a little bit about me, we've lived here, my family's lived here for 15 years. My husband and I have been married 25 years next year, we have two wonderful kids. And they are out of the house, well, one is. Once, our daughter's 21, she's a freelance makeup artist, and she also works at Walgreens as a lead makeup consultant. Our son is 19, she's out of the house. Our son's 19 and holds two jobs, a cook at Randy's and a Best Buy computer consultant. So we're pretty proud of them. We used to live in Caryville for, well, we just moved, obviously, and the kids attended elementary, Little Red Elementary. My husband, Kenneth, works at Menards as a supervisor for past 13 years and enjoys it. And, let's see, I've had endless support from my husband and my children and my family and friends. With the idea of saving more and slowly becoming empty nesters, we knew that we were being called to make some changes. It was time to downsize and move closer. We recently purchased this home, all the neighbors have been very warm and kind to us. Now, a little bit about me, I've been a hairstylist for 30-plus years, and I know you're probably thinking I started when I was 12, that's, I get that a lot, but no, anyway. Okay, so in all seriousness, I graduated cosmetology in 87, a Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. I have been licensed in Oklahoma, Arkansas, New Hampshire, and now Wisconsin. I knew at a very early age I was called this, into this particular career, as I thrive on design creativity, but more importantly, people. In 2014, I opened my own business named Shades &amp; Company, and began in one of my favorite salons named Rochelle Salon. After working there for two years, Rochelle's closed her doors and forced 12 stylists out of their private, with their private businesses to go in separate directions. Since then, I've tried a couple places, and I have not had the experience that I've needed to continue in those locations. For the better part of my career, I've been in a typical salon environments of those consisting of many professionals in one room, and enjoyed that business model. I've learned so much by watching and listening to them. Because of the circumstances, I took the opportunity and laid, that was laid in front of me. And in going solo, I rented a space as an independent stylist, and have come to the conclusion that that's kind of where I belong, is solo. I currently rent a salon suite on Water Street, and I've truly enjoyed the suite life. The quality time with my clients, a one-on-one basis, it really allows me to focus on them and their specific needs without the interruptions of others around me. I know that they have truly enjoyed having the concentrated time and effort on them without the distractions. However, after being in this location for under a year, I'm finding once again that my definition of professional and respectable salon is quite different than the average salon mindset. In my current location, I've experienced what I would consider very unprofessional and inappropriate behavior concerning language, conversation, a noise level, and distraction. Sanitation and cleanliness in the restrooms are other factors resulting in pursuing this final move in my career. There's 14 suites in there now, eight of them are taken, I think I'm the one that cleans the bathroom, so if you can kind of wrap your head around that. If I may go back just a little bit, just to give you a backstory of kind of what I've, what brought me to this decision. So after two years of working in a salon as an employee with the understanding I would transfer to the independent plan, resulting in an unfilled follow-through, I then moved to my, to follow my career path. After working together another two years as an independent stylist and building my clientele even more, the management folded, which forced the next move, hence my salon, Shades &amp; Company. After working in another salon environment for four short months, my Christian values were dismissed and rejected, and I was asked to leave. Lastly, after signing the contract to my current location, the anticipated opening date because of the renovations was delayed, and I was then asked to be in a temporary spot for two months prior to moving to where I'm now. So, after many moves, and after weighing my options and praying for God's direction, He has laid it on my heart to move my independent salon business into my home where I can serve my clients in a relaxing, respectable, and professional atmosphere. In helping to understand the operations of my salon, firstly, there will be no exterior alterations, changes, or distractions to the neighborhood at all. I will only work four, possibly five days a week, with two days in the evening. I will be only servicing one client at a time with very little overlap. They will be using my driveway and possibly one spot in front, only if need be. My days of operation may vary as my personal calendar shifts. My mission, I like to think of myself, is not only a hairstylist, but importantly, a daymaker. I love to listen, educate, and assist my clients with any of their hair care needs. My joy comes from seeing my clients lifted in spirits by bringing out their beauty in the only eyes of our Creator. I consider myself a very positive person, in which I love to encourage and speak life into anyone the Lord puts in my chair. I only want the best for my clients, and if it means to create a healthy environment in my salon, in my home, then that's my goal. My request, currently holding a manager's license, an establishment license, being an experienced stylist of 30 years with an ongoing training, and have worked alongside many professionals and business owners, I feel very confident and well-established and educated to be able to own, manage, and operate my salon. Why should this be approved? I have the most amazing and caring clients that I respect, and would like them a chance to offer them the salon experience what they deserve. I feel that I've been given a great opportunity with my skills and education to offer the community of Eau Claire a professional, safe, and respected environment. I had entertained the idea of operating a salon in my home before, however, living outside city limits, I felt as though I could not ask my clients to travel that far. With family being utmost importance, I did not feel called to mix family and career at that time. Though the more recent changes in our lives, I feel that this is a prime time for me to carry out this new and exciting plan in my career. On the approval of my salon, we will then begin the few renovations needed to begin the operations. This will consist of one shampoo sink, a stylist chair, a dispensary for my color, and a mirror. A projected opening date would be October 1st, if this goes through. I would like to close by thanking you again. After reviewing my proposal, I would be very grateful and appreciative if you would allow me this amazing opportunity to see my business in this new and improved business plan for me and my clients, and to fulfill what I've been called to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see if there's any questions. Are there any questions for the applicant? Jamie.
Have you talked to your neighbors about your plan?
I have, I have. I've talked to everyone on Bordeaux Court, and everyone is actually really excited. I had a lady behind me already called and made an appointment with me. So that was, that was kind of an okay from her, so it's been great.
Any other questions? I have one. Are you going to have any kind of exterior signage on the house?
I didn't plan on it.
Okay.
If I'm allowed one, maybe one this big, but I did not plan on it. I don't need it.
You would want to check with city staff if you do want to put a sign of any sort to make sure that it meets requirements.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'd be looking for a motion. I'd be looking for a motion.
My favorite barber is a home occupation, so I'm going to support this one, and I will move to grant the conditional use permit.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Number four for recommendation easement, electrical underground distribution easement for Jeffers Road Park.
And I apologize, I forgot that these were two-sided copies, so my map is on the same site as my speaking house. The easement is along the north side of Jeffers Road Park. This is where the new ballfields are, have been constructed. The substation is just off this drawing to the right here with the high transmission lane, lines that go up the valley back to 312. For reference, there's the document out of the easement. Basically, the request for the easement is to provide a secondary feed back into the Gateway Industrial Park to provide better service for it. The reason for the jog is because we've got some utilities on this side of County Line Road, and so this gets past those utilities and then comes back up to where the, the normal utility easements are. As you've probably noticed in all the plaits, there's a 10-foot utility easement behind the right-of-way, and this is where that would go as well. It's not in conflict, it's below ground, so it's not in conflict with any proposed improvements that we know of at this time for the park, so it won't get in the way of any of that. So having said that, if there's questions?
Are there any questions? I don't see any. Oh, Commissioner Peterson.
It talks about not, not getting in the way of any future improvements, and yet it talks about some possible above-ground risers or...
Oh, I think that was in reaction to a recent ordinance about public utilities and public right-of-way, and how high they can come up without, and still be within the requirements. And I think that the point here is that these are going to be typical utility facilities like we've seen with other transmission lines.
Okay. It does say the necessary underground cables, pedestals, which are usually above-ground.
Yes.
So if, if they were to put those in, and, and something were to go into the park area, that would require them to move it, they'd be required to move it then?
They, they would be required, yes.
Okay.
The way the easement is, is written.
Commissioner Klinkhammer.
Thank you. Having been out there, the land is pretty flat. There are no drainage issues with this.
I, I hope not, because we've got a, we've got a regional stormwater facility on that same parcel. But never seen ever. There's always that bigger rainfall event. It will humble us, and it does.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to make comment, now is the time to do so. Is there anyone who'd like to make public comment? I don't see anyone, so let's close the public hearing, and I'd be looking for a motion.
Let's grant the easement.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number five, for the very, very patient, for approval, site plan warehouse and manufacturing facility at 1202 Western Avenue.
This is the property on Western Avenue, west side. A recreational trail runs between Western Avenue and the property. It's primarily industrial area with our, with some residents across the road. This is a blow-up of the site. Again, our recreational trail, and then the site. If you've been out there, it's pretty much been cleared, and it appears to us they're going to take a lot of outdoor storage and put it inside a new building. This is the site plan showing then the new building, parking lot. I highlighted in green the existing property line. There's a fence that extends out into, or at least it appears to extend out into our property. They are actually moving the driveway slightly with this project, and thus moving the gate as part of that project. And there's a building elevation also in the packet depicting the appearance of the This is a 23,850-square-foot building. It appears the existing outdoor storage for this facility will be placed in the new building, and if the facility continues to have outdoor storage, it is required to be screened as per city code. It also appears that this existing fence is within the city right-of-way, and it should be moved at this time back to their property line. The parking requirement for this type of use based on the number of employees plus customer needs, they're expecting nine employees at the facility, and they're proposing 14 parking stalls. They do need to provide a pedestrian connection from the sidewalk out to the bike trail. They'd probably just stripe an area along the side of their driveway would be the best way to accomplish that. Engineering does need to prove the realignment of that driveway with the new curb cut on Western Avenue. They do need to provide a four-stall bike rack, and any lighting must meet city standards. We are recommending they provide street trees, and they can accomplish that by simply planting them on our property, subject to city forester approval. The site plan, they do show trash enclosure. Site plan was reviewed by Waterways and Parks Commission, and they have recommended approval of the site plan with the conditions noted in the report. Site grading and drainage and other city services are reviewed in the report. We provided a draft letter with conditions, provide two copies of revised site plan showing that pedestrian connection, showing the street trees, which will then be subject to city forester approval, providing the four-stall bike rack, noting that dumpster is a six-foot-high screen, showing their fence relocated to their property line. We need engineering approval of drainage, we need engineering approval of realignment of their driveway, and that their new lighting meets city standards. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Darrell? Commissioner Peterson.
I think I just answered my own question, but Waterway and Parks were involved because it's adjacent to the bike trail?
Correct. Any site plan next to the trail goes to Waterways. One thing I did want to note is XL Energy has the property immediately to the north, or maybe it's one further to the north, and they're doing a big storage building, which we administratively approved because it's simply a storage building, there's no parking involved, and they're going to be doing the same thing, all this outdoor storage gets into the building, and they can provide that landscaping along the trail. So this is going to really clean up the looks of that area with all that outdoor storage going indoors, so.
Nice. Any other questions for Darrell? I don't see any. Would the applicant like to come forward? Thank you for being extremely patient tonight.
We've been here before, so. Bruce Moens with Lean &amp; Peterson Architects out of Eau Claire here, and we're just, I'm just here to answer any questions you might have. So, again, from the design perspective, we made sure that it met all the ordinances and requirements. As far as the fence goes, because it used to be a railway that was the private access point for a spur, so that's why we thought maybe, you know, can be left in place, but that's certainly something we'll move as part of the project, so.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Peterson.
No, no concerns with the conditions in the, the letter?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you. This is a public hearing, and if any like, one would like to make public comment, they certainly can. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the conditions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Down to discussion and direction, code compliance items. Anyone have anything? All of my neighbors have been behaving themselves this time. I'll tell you the story of how my lawn gets mowed someday. Any future agenda items? Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the City of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at ValleyMediaWorks.org.